Meeting's open, we're being recorded.
Twice.
I gotta read these.
About, I'll read to you when I'm done. Please don't do that.
All right.
What?
Don't start.
TJ said that, not me. Yeah, I know there's several in Montgomery, she hasn't been announced.
That's on, that's. Well, she went away, but I didn't get notification.
Did you guys read all the minutes already?
Yep, you're way behind.
All right.
Spent so much time socializing.
You want me to tell you about the project I do first, or you didn't start yet?
We don't have time. Start reading.
Oh.
Tell them, TJ.
Yeah, I have mine now.
Are you going to lunch on Monday here? Am I doing what, going to lunch on Friday? I don't know yet.
Oh wait, I just read this one, no. Some of these are the same, on the eighteenth and the. Four. What? Some of them need a month or something.
Well, because one is Executive Session and we're, no, that's not it.
Eighteenth, November eighteenth and the fourth.
Oh. No, that says Examination Meeting Minutes.
That's eighteen.
Yeah, these are the eighteen.
The fourth looks the same to me though.
Did I give you, that's not the fourth.
I didn't refresh your sense. So that, is that one?
This one.
And then this one's the eighteen. Oh, the fourth is different. Yeah, sorry. It's all right. Let me sign the one.
I just didn't change the date for the.
You were just checking to see if I was actually reading.
No, we're getting creative.
Wait, watch me. I was like, I thought these two guys, they're ready to approve something.
This is like going shopping with my wife and now we're waiting.
For you. See, you're still working on your patients.
At least he goes. My husband doesn't even know where the.
Oh, why would you want your husband to go shopping with you?
So he can pay?
Exactly.
By the way, guys.
Going shopping, it's like taking my wife to a museum. She has to stop and read every label.
This is way worse than me.
Yeah, right, that's what she tells me.
Oh, are there more? Oh, goodie. Wait, this one says November fourth. Fourth, did I just sign?
I didn't go through.
That's the regular meeting.
No, this is the right, I just signed this one, I'm gonna just toss this one because I signed the other one.
Hold on.
Now I got October twenty eighth, hold on. TJ. We have company, behave yourself.
Oh, all right.
All right. Motion to approve the. Do I have to say them all? I guess I do. Executive Session Meeting Minutes, October twenty first.
Second.
Wait, hold on, let's do it all together. Select Board Meeting Minutes, October twenty eighth, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, October twenty eighth. Select Board Meeting Minutes, November fourth. Uh, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, November fourth, Select Board Meetings of November eighteenth. And Executive Session Meeting Minutes of November eighteenth.
Second.
Any discussions? On favor?
All right, all right.
All right, um. Here, all of you guys can, you want to sign all of those, and then I'll just pass to these. That one. Take that one. All right. Audience participation, do we have anyone here, audience participation?
We have a gentleman here from Belle Flure, hi, come on down.
Welcome, feel free to have a seat. These here too, Jeff. Hi. How are you? What can we do for you?
Uh, yes, we're looking to get an updated HVAC certification.
Okay.
For Belle, sorry.
I'm sorry, did you say HVAC or? Do you mean HCA?
HCA, excuse me.
Okay, all right, just, I wasn't sure.
I thought I heard.
Health Community.
R M L. A R M E L.
This is the Town Administrator, Christina Barrera.
TJ, Jeff, and Kara, so you're.
R O M.
I probably should have done that first, thanks, Sharon. Um, so you need an updated Host Community Agreement?
Yes, we're getting everything ready for the State, so they asked us to update that. Would it be possible to get it by the end of this meeting, or was there a wait?
I don't think so. But, you need it soon, is what you're saying.
Soon as possible.
As soon as possible, um. So, we would have to look at the one we have previously.
Yeah, they changed, I just recently had to do one for Putting Hill.
Yeah.
Uh, so the Cannabis Control Commission has changed uh, the format of their Host Community Agreements, uh, that were acceptable in the past. I do have, um, because I knew you were coming, or I thought you were coming. Joanne told me. I do have a copy of the model Host Community Agreement, um, that's the Cannabis Control Commission, do you have a copy of this?
I don't.
Would you like a copy?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. And I can grab your email at the end of this, so we can talk more, but. Um, so that is the one that is distributed by the Cannabis Control Commission. And when Putting Hill had come to us to talk about this, I had sent it to Legal, just to make sure, like, is this what we want to do? Legal had sent back, uh, they took what was in here, but made it more robust to protect the town. Um, we had submitted it, and the Cannabis Control Commission kicked it back.
Okay.
They were gonna reach out to the Commission's Director of Licensing and confirm that the indemnification provisions are customary in the town's contracts, if you like to resolve a concern there. And then there was just specific to Putting Hill, they were calling themselves a micro business.
Okay.
I think that's different for you guys, there's a different classification for you guys, so that wouldn't be an issue. Um, I think it's just up to the board on if you want to use the template that's provided by the CCC, or if you want me to update the one that was provided by Legal um, to work for Belle Flure.
Which one did we end up?
For Putting Hill. Since it, they're just such a much smaller operation, we, I did amend the, um, the template that's provided by Cannabis Control Commission, um, and they were on, they needed it like back in November. So when it got kicked back, I contacted Legal. It seemed like it was gonna take a lot of steps for them to be able to get to where they needed to be to get their HCA updated, so I just amended the template to include what, like the meat of what.
Okay.
Legal wanted. Um, and then we just submitted the, the template one.
Okay.
But it, that is a much smaller, from my understanding, operation than.
Than what you guys are, okay. Um. And it's nothing similar to the one that we have in the past, there's no way that.
No, the ones, I haven't seen the one that we've had in the past specific to Belle Flure, but the other ones that we've had in the past are like a page.
Okay.
Page or two.
And this is a lot more.
Has Legal looked at the ones from CDC and they said?
CCC, yeah.
Or CCI.
Yep, that's okay, no, they did, so when I first got this, um, the Host Community Agreement from the Cannabis Control Commission, I had sent it to Legal. And I think Legal was not necessarily sure, like, what type of, um.
Operation.
Yeah. So, and uh, Putting Hill's so small, that when it came down to it, I just amended what was in here and submitted it.
So maybe we should go with the, that from Legal?
We can, so, to answer your question, we wouldn't be able to do this by the end of the meeting today, um, but I can certainly look into, uh, updating the one from Legal to reflect your company's information, and we could try submitting it that way.
So, could we motion it, um, contingent on approval from, uh, Town Council?
This wouldn't go to Town Council again.
Okay.
It would, I would just fill in the information relevant to Belle Flure.
Okay.
And give it to them, I would, I signed the last one for, um.
Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't need to come back before the board?
No.
Okay, that's, I was just trying to figure out a way to get it to not have to.
The only thing I'm asking from the board is, would you rather the template or the one from Legal, and it sounds like you guys want to do the one from Legal?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so I will, um, update the one that we have, it's sort of just like a boilerplate one from our Town Council. And put your information in there, sign it and send it over to you, if that works. And then just one other question, did you get a chance to see the monitoring report from Arlevesque? Um, they did a report on January second for your property, I guess there's an issue with the silt fence, I don't know, if you wanted to take a look at it.
Um. They say which one?
There's pictures, I don't, there's a whole report from Arlevesque. It's nothing crazy, nothing bad, it's just the silt fence, I think, got knocked over, and then there's one other uh, like more permanent fencing that I think needs repair, but everything else came, came out good.
Yes, it's been really windy. That's probably why.
Are you guys close to being fully up and running?
Uh, our goal is, well, we're hopefully to get into a contact with CCC in the next couple of weeks, where they should have interviewed by Zoom, and after that we're hoping they come in to visit the site.
Yep.
And kind of give us an idea of where we're at and how much more work we'll need.
I know, you guys hit some.
And we're hoping, yeah, before spring, um, that's kind of my timeline, is seeing, uh, the things that they may require and where we're at now. So, just fingers crossed that there are more, uh, major delays.
I know, well, I'm hopeful it's broke, you guys know, it's been, I know you guys.
It's been a while, yes.
Yeah.
We'll make sure to, uh, get the defense fixed.
Um, if you could just give me your email address, so I can reach out to you this week.
My first name, R M L, A R M E L. At Belle Flure, B E L L E, S L E U R, mass.com.
Mass. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much. Is there anything else that, no, you're outside?
Oh, yes.
No, we're just, I just want to make sure you have, if you wanted to ask us, that's all.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think that's it, and if we have any more questions, we'll make sure.
Reach out to Christina.
Reach out to Christina.
Thank you. All right, is Ryan Ernie here?
Uh, he's listening, but I don't think he has anything to contribute.
All right. Um. Never mind, I was just thinking, something, um, Christina, what do you have, Brian?
Well, so we have. Yes, so we have. We, I had given, TJ, thank you for your response, like, he agrees that it should be signed, um. So, um, just if we could sign it, I will send it to.
I don't.
I don't think there is an original, I think it's just waiting for, to pick whichever one you want.
Um, if you want.
Yeah. If ever talking to you long.
I'm gonna sign this one?
No, that's another minutes.
Oh.
If you guys want to just sign that one?
I got from here.
Oh, okay.
There might be other things in there to sign, is it all set?
Didn't agree.
I know, right? This one might be done.
Sorry.
Oh, that one's.
Either or, if that's, they're the same, I think, I really don't know.
Mayor of the town, look at that.
So I gotta sign it. We'll never live it down. Every time I go into Circle K.
Mayor's gotta pay better than this.
He goes, here's the mayor of Blanford. Please.
My neighbors call me that too.
Yes, well, there's one of the things.
One of the many.
I don't have any neighbors, well, I basically. Mary's my best neighbor.
All right, do you need a motion for that? Motion to approve the Furcog Highway Bids FY26 contract.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? On favor?
All right.
All right.
Um, I had a meeting with.
Oh, that was.
Why, sir? Okay.
Or, don't worry.
Um.
Right. You got a meeting?
I did, I had a lot of meetings. Uh, I had a meeting with Kinsheriff, um, Kelly, our new accountant, and Sarah, our treasurer. Um, for the transition for Kelly to take over, so Kelly is all set up, she's got her email, um, she has access to, I believe, Vadar. And she's waiting for her access to Vadar. And she, uh, has access to software for historical information. Um, moving forward, uh, she just got her emails today, so I'm gonna, I did send to Joanne and the Water Department that, uh, moving forward, anything warrant wise or payroll wise uh, for the month of January to be sent to not only Kinsheriff's firm, but also Kelly, so that they, it's, Kelly has any questions, Kelly's gonna be doing our next warrant. So that if she has any questions, she can just refer to Erin for any questions she may have. Um. Yeah, that's really, that's really kind of it, that she's, she started January second, and we had a meeting January second, and she seems good to go.
Okay.
Um, the, I, there's been sort of like an ongoing thing with PBPC and the historical. Um. The houses, what?
The, oh, um, putting the houses on the historical, whatever.
Registry?
Yeah.
All right, so I guess, uh, according to Linda. She was under the impression that, uh, there was leftover money in FY24 of twenty-five hundred dollars, and supposedly Mike had told Linda that they would roll that twenty-five hundred dollars into FY25, in addition to the standard five thousand dollars that's in that account.
Oh, that didn't get done.
And it didn't get done. So, there is five thousand dollars available in that account, because that's the standard amount for the historical, um. Product. I reached out to Linda and Shannon Walsh, she's the individual from PBPC who does the project, and I let them know that there was five thousand dollars available, and that whatever happened beforehand, I, I can't speak on because I'm not, unfortunately, that twenty-five hundred is not there, um.
There's no trace?
It would have rolled into.
Yeah, it got rolled into the general fund, it's just unfortunate to, I, I believe her when she says that she was told that, but.
I mean, if it becomes an issue, then we can talk more about it, but for right now, there's, haven't even spent what's in there.
Right. Um. I did send an email to all departments as a reminder to turn in payments received to the treasurer within one week of proceeding them. Um. The water rate study, the accounting, uh, Kinsheriff did send, I don't know if you guys remember, Gordon last week was saying that he's been asking for some information for the water rate study. Um, a lot of the information that he was asking for was just very generalized stuff that the town of Blanford doesn't even do, like it's just not how our system is set up, so they, Kinsheriff did send over five years of annual town reports that contain the fiscal information that the Water Department would need, they even highlighted what he was asking for, so.
So he had that route.
Um. I do have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with Sarah, our treasurer and the Bond Council, to discuss, uh, the Water Department's requested green light letter, um. Mary will be there too. And I believe somebody from Unibank as well, a representative from Unibank.
So have we, where's, where are we at with this?
Well, so there's some confusion with this, because Bond Council had reached out to Sarah, asking, basically providing a checklist, this is what we need. Sarah and I worked together, we got everything that was needed, thank you, Mary, um, because she was also very helpful. I mean, I went through it, Sarah went through it, everything that they were asking for was in this packet, and it was all original, and there was nothing that was stamped or copied, I had a wet signature on everything. I overnighted all of this to Sarah, so that she could get it to Bond Council. She did, she got it all to Bond Council. Three weeks go by, we don't hear anything, and Sarah had reached out a few times saying, you know, hey, you know, where are we at, you know, everything was submitted. And, um, Bond Council replied at the end of last week, and said, nope, this is wrong, this is wrong, that's wrong, we still need this, we still need that, and I'm going, did the lady even open the package? Because all of the stuff that she's saying is missing or isn't there, is all of the stuff that we provided and sent, so. I, I really don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow, all I know is that, uh, the green light letter is not coming anytime soon.
My god, what is the green light letter, I'm trying to get words for this.
Sure, so the green light letters, so that we can move forward with the loan.
So that Gordon can pay back the people that he owes money to. Um. To your knowledge, Gordon has helped it all work, but the.
Yeah, so, um, he did say that today, today he said to me that Jim from Wright and Pierce, like, we is gonna reach out to Baystate. That is the vendor who we have not paid, and has put a stop, like, it's on the work for now. Oh, Jim's gonna reach out to Baystate and see where they're at, and I'm like, well, we know where they're at, we're not going forward with any more work until.
I want to see the contracts that Water has with all these companies.
I requested them.
Don't you remember me asking for a meeting last week?
So, none of us has had eyes on it.
Yeah, nobody.
No.
Did you get them?
No.
So.
No, you knew the answer.
Can Water sign, can Water sign a contract of that size without the Select Board?
I don't.
I don't know the size of the contract, uh, the contracting question for Baystate. Um, I don't know what that goes up to, I know, obviously, at this point, we know that it's six hundred thousand dollars at the very least. I don't know.
So there's no way. I just find it hard to believe that another board could enter into that sort of a contract without Select Board.
Oh, I don't think.
It blows my mind.
And then copies of the contract would have to be with Tom Clerk and the accountant, right?
Yes.
Is that where they go?
The accountant should have signed it as well.
Yes.
We shouldn't be entering into any contracts for any amount of money that does not have the accountant's signature.
They sign it, and it's there, and then go forward, we should sign every contract for this town.
So we want to see.
Don't you agree?
Do you want, um, you want me to reach out, or do you want to reach out to Gordon and tell him that the Select Board asked to see the contracts? He said that I signed it too, so.
He did say that.
Um, I don't remember signing it, but.
No, he asked me, and he laughed and said, they signed it. Said, so what, Gordon? They're, they're, she's not responsible for you looking at your budget.
Yeah.
What are you talking about?
So, um, yeah, I think that we just need to make sure, so if we did sign it, there should be a copy with the accountant in the.
It just in my point of view. You guys are like the, I think, what makes sense to me, be the last to sign it, right? So it should be legal, and the town accountant, they're funding that the fund, the funding is there to support the contract. Then you guys get to see the contract and see, okay, the accountant says the money's there, and Legal says this contract is good, then you can go.
What I think happened there was he came and we signed so we could go after that funding.
Yeah, maybe.
I'm pretty sure that's what happened. You know?
And, and it was the.
We gave him approval to, yeah. And he, but we didn't have any contracts, we gave him the said money to go after the.
Maybe.
Well, he's saying that only Kara signed this contract for Baystate, which doesn't, I.
Maybe I did, I don't know, we signed a lot of stuff, um, either way, I was like.
I, I'm getting confused here now. The contractor is not Baystate.
It is, I'm sorry.
It is.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, they're subcontractors, right?
Oh, okay, because, uh, then who is the main contractor?
Wright and Pierce.
So, they're buying their stuff through Baystate?
No, so Wright and Pierce is, they're kind of like the they're the engineering company.
Okay.
Baystate are like the doers, like, they're going in with the actual work.
Yeah.
Elmo Electric.
Yeah, Elmo Electric as well.
So we, we can't really do anything unless we see a contract.
I've asked to see it.
We've all asked.
Well, it's, it's up to them to provide it.
I know.
Did you cut to Wright and Pierce, or?
I tried not to go near that.
No, I was just asking if you did without stubbing your toe.
Um, I know, I, I've had meetings with Wright and Pierce and, uh, Baystate and the Mass and Water Trust in conjunction with the Water Department, just so that I can try and understand what, what is actually going on here. Um, but as far as like getting into side conversations with them, I have not done that, because I just don't.
No, no, I, I.
No, enough about it.
I get where you're at, I'm just.
And I also don't want to ask a vendor, right?
That's pretty embarrassing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to have Gordon, you know, just, just say we need the contract, if there's no contract, we can't move further.
Yeah. Well, I've also said, I'm not doing anything right now, stop everything.
Yeah, well, but they still want their money. Are we incurring interest?
We can't.
Can't.
That's the only thing good about it.
Okay, um, we'll keep her posted, let us know what happens, I guess. I'm hoping that, do we have a copy of everything that was in that packet, or no? Um, the packet that we sent to Bond Council?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And, but again, they're copies, so Bond, I, I can.
Bond Council has the original, but we, we got everything.
But they're contracts.
No, no, we're talking something different.
Oh, you turned the page?
Yeah. Um, and then also our report came out for, um, roadway, um, chapter, we. Fair share.
Again.
Hundred and fourteen thousand nine sixty-one.
Wow.
No, no, it's just fair share.
Okay.
It's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is that money that we get, that we actually get that money, right? And we can use it for whatever, we just have to submit, um, a report of like what we did, we don't actually have to go through all the steps like chapter might be.
I'm sure Rainey has thoughts and plans.
Yeah, I think his thoughts and plans are to go back to enjoying retirement.
So are you closer to a super?
Well, the.
We have some applications, but we're waiting for the posting to close, and then we're gonna reach out and do our interviews and go from there.
Okay, good.
Okay.
And that's it for me.
That's it. Jennifer, come on down.
I don't really have a lot.
Okay.
Have anything for me?
I don't think so, is there any, um, updates on either of the properties in town?
One property has, um, offered. Has received an offer.
Oh.
Um, and they're waiting to hear, and the other one, we're just holding off.
Okay.
Um, waiting to see what happens, um. I'll give it another move.
Okay.
Before, I think. Um, so we'll see.
Exciting.
Well, hopefully.
Yeah.
You know, get that moving, um. But they're very hard, very hard to get in touch with those people, it just takes a long time for the communication with them, so.
Mary, any questions?
Yeah, what property are we talking about, please?
The ones that Nichols owns.
Both on Main Street.
Both Main Street.
So, Connie's old house.
Um, this. I don't, I don't know what the numbers are offhand, Mary.
I don't need the numbers, but which house?
So, I believe the white one, probably.
I believe it was the white one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, we've just had a bunch of complaints, um, it just.
I've been trying to tell you one of them, cause I got whacked on it today when I walked into a place.
What?
Was it, uh, some little furry critters?
Yes. Yes, that was one of them.
It, the guy left where his position working, it followed me up the door talking about it. Oh, that's like, I.
You gotta stop shopping publicly. I go out of town now.
Who are we talking about?
I'm not saying a word.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, but yes, so, yeah, yes.
Just a minute, she'll explain.
He said just furries.
Yeah, they're furries.
There's furry.
Don't write that down.
No, don't write that down.
Live animals or or furry?
No.
Look what you did, Jeff.
I know.
I'll tell you later, Mary, we can't put it in the paper.
Just that we have furry critters.
Other, no, you said you've been getting complaints.
That was one of them. Um. Another one was a trash one, um. And then, of course, our same one from Brookman Drive and I got a call at four thirty this morning on that one. Again, I know, I know, well, there's.
I wouldn't answer it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, eighty bucks.
I didn't, but I did take the voicemail in case it was important and I had to call back, so. And it wasn't, it was just the same complaint, so I'm going to assume. I don't know why at four thirty in the morning, um, and and that's been an ongoing, that's been one we've dealt with the D E P with and so. You know, she's just gonna do her. Her part. Um. And we're up for doing our inspections by the end of the month, um, for the. What you would call it?
Transfers?
No. Transfer stations do for their inspection this coming Saturday, um, by the D E P and. But we're doing our inspections for the plazas.
Okay.
And for anybody who has a business. They're coming up by the end of this month. Um, that's it.
Okay.
That's. I think. We are gonna look into permit, uh, permeize, permeize. Whatever it's called, um, and see. If we can get on to do the transfer station stickers only, we can't do it for our plans because we really have to look at the plans, stamp the plans.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So we're gonna look and see what that would do for us. And if it's gonna be. An extra cost, which I'm sure it is, we might have to go up on the. Transfer station stickers.
Okay.
So I just want to talk to the guy and see.
Sure.
See what it's about. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Oh, what are, what are you gonna do, what do they call it, the stop shopper?
Swap. Oh, you wanna talk about that? Yes, we can talk about that. Um. Um, well. We need, we got the six thousand, um, but Brett said we need about fifteen thousand more. So we want, I know, that's all, well, that's all, well.
He wants to build.
No, we want a permanent with doors and, you know, people, yes, no, we don't.
What are you talking, free path, free path building, free path?
Um, I don't think that's what. I think whichever's cheaper, he's pricing them out right now, um, whether to build it or to have a prefab.
What what size is that? And you know?
I don't know. No, I have it in my notes. It's.
It's not, it's not epic, you know.
Yeah.
Measure.
Yeah, I mean, we've got the. Thing all laid out. Yeah, we got the slab in, we, so, you know, we do have that part done. Um, if I had. Thought about it, but of course, we didn't know about the grant, I think, came in at the same time as our town meeting, we would have went in and asked for money as well.
So what happens if the grant money isn't spent this year?
It will be, because, well, I mean, we started this project two years ago. And first we've done thing, then last, and then the year we put the slab down, then we did this grant, we waited, now we have the grant. You know, people are asking for this all the time.
So the grant will fund a partial build?
A partial, it's gonna cost about twenty thousand altogether. Probably a little less, but. So in our meeting today, he said, Brett said about fifteen thousand.
Okay, so this is like gently used appliances, things like that?
Yep. Clients, any, you know, anything.
I think Chester had a pretty clear list of what you could and couldn't drop off, I'm sure you guys.
It'll be the same, yeah, it'll be posted on the.
Cause you'll have a thousand over there.
Right.
I've seen that.
Yeah, it is.
Thirty.
It is, and so I think it's a really good, good program to have, um. So, I mean, they sort of do it now, but kind of takes the stuff and puts it out on that big stump there that's out in front of the building and he. Puts all the good stuff out there and then people come in and take it. Well, you know, I mean, people hate to throw things away that somebody else could use.
I know.
And it's better than putting it on the street.
Like some people.
Yes, so. All right, I think that would be. Really beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Jen.
All right, we have no Gordon here, so. Um. Can we put, um. Aaron Potte on the agenda for next week?
Put your, um, what's your, um.
Talk about permeize.
I know, we've done it before, so I'm just saying.
I feel like he hasn't come before.
Yeah, we have, we talked about this before. A little bit.
Is it the only one that won that?
Yep.
That's what I thought. Hi, Mayor.
I I don't, I really don't mind that it takes me more time, that's. It's because when I, it's a mess, when I go in there, I can't find things, things aren't noted right, that the, the, um. It's paid for and it's months old, but it doesn't say it's been issued, um. He's he's appointed, not elected, right?
Yeah, we appointed.
So just, that's all I'm saying is, we've talked to him about this before, I'm not sure that he can, I'm not sure he can help it. I'm not sure if he, he can, he doesn't like that technology and he has a real hard time with it. But especially the checks, he's collecting the checks. Yeah. That's, that's. So that's where. At least we can have him and let him know that we would prefer. Not to do the checks and do it digitally. Well, especially because then he's not charging the twenty five dollars. That it takes, that I know of, because the fees are small. That he brings in, it's supposed to be an extra twenty five.
For.
For a manual. A manual. Of course, maybe what he does is has them put the. I don't know what he does. Okay, I just know of the mess, it took me a long time to figure out. And.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is that he's aware of how it's supposed to be done. And he's not doing it. So if we're gonna call him in, I think there needs to be like. Hey, you're not doing it, this, you know, otherwise we're just.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. So let's, um.
Well, I thought he just said he's the one who asked for it, didn't you just say?
Yeah.
And I believe he's not doing it because he didn't get an iPad to enter this stuff in.
Well, he wanted an iPad and we told him no. So I don't know if that's part of it, but, um, yeah, let's, I guess in the meantime, let's try to figure out what. I guess what the protocol is for. For the emails to go forward to the inspector. No, I'm saying. But he doesn't even do that. I'm saying protocol for like.
Him not doing it?
For, I don't know if the word reprimanding is what I wanna use, but.